Everybody ready? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being here this morning. Ed Perry, congratulations. And thank you for your service. Roll call.
Mayor Kirkindall.
Here.
Mayor Protam Kukneal.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair is absent, excused. Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle is also absent, excused. And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Today is workshop number two, and we will continue the review of the 2015 draft general plan. So, good morning, George.
Good morning, sir.
Okay.
We have a lot of information to try to cover. These are four of the larger, more complex elements of the general plan that are out before you today: the land use element, the growth management and cost of development, which is a combined element, circulation, traffic circulation, and open space. So, one of the concepts that we didn't really get into with the last meeting was going through the goals and strategies that are set out in each of those elements. The first four elements really didn't have a list of goals and strategies. Starting with land use, we do. It may be appropriate for us to spend a little more time looking at the goals and strategies and a little less at the text unless you have a particular or specific request or an issue you want to talk about, and then we certainly will pause for those. One of the things that we talked about last time and didn't really address very much were some of the maps in the plan, and I'm just going to put them up real quick just to give you an overview of them. These are not readable due to the scale. I apologize for that. We do have full-size ones available if you'd like to come look at them. These are a land use map, a circulation map, traffic circulation, which identifies new roadways and those roadways that are proposed by some other jurisdictions, including SIMPO, and an open space map, which identifies open space tracks owned, operated, or leased by the city and/or trail systems. It's difficult to see on this map, but the circle trail is identified on here, circulating all the way around Prescott. We do anticipate continual updates primarily of the land use map. I mentioned last time that in relation to the land use map, any rezonings that occur within the city limits have to conform to the land use designation, and sometimes they don't and require both the land use map and the zoning map be amended at the same time. Very common occurrence in Arizona, something we've seen happen a number of times ourselves. We also have a potential for annexations to occur, and when they occur, the land use map needs to be looked at and verified as to whether or not the land uses that are shown outside the corporate limits, often as sort of a holding designation, are updated to conform to the intent of that annexation. And that's something that council sees through an annexation process or through a general plan land use map amendment. One other thing that the map shows that we do not have on one of our current maps is annexation interface boundaries. This is a portion of land use map from Prescott Valley. Prescott Valley was one of the folks who commented during the 60-day public comment and agency comment period that we held last fall. One of the things that they suggested was that the mutually agreed-upon annexation boundaries should be indicated on our map. They have actually indicated it on their map as this dashed red line that runs down all the way through, showing where they anticipate future annexations on their side of that line, and they anticipate that we may annex on our side of that line. That is one of the things that we could add to our land use map. It's a very minor adjustment to that. Staff does not see any reason not to do that. We'll just perhaps look for a little direction from council if that seems like an appropriate thing to do. That will be something we ask you for formal action on at a future meeting, unless you have a question.
I have a lot of questions.
About this specific map?
About what you just said.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Acknowledging the anticipated limitations on water, acknowledging the fact that there's no plan to import water at this particular time, and probably for the foreseeable future, the dollars and cents that would be necessary for the city to undertake that endeavor might be somewhat restrictive. What I don't understand is why we would contemplate, in a general plan, annexation of property that we can't support, that we can't provide basic services with regards to water, too.
Councilman, I can comment on that. One example is that the city does have a pre-annexation agreement with Depot Ranches, which contemplates annexation. And, as you know, Depot Ranch has a block of water, so water, they would use that water for the annexations. There is another prospective annexation which we may request, which we may receive soon that would bring water with it. So I think that your point is well taken with respect to the availability of water. Otherwise, there should not be an annexation. But in those exceptional cases where there either is water or they'll bring water, then that would be, you know, a request that would fall in the context of what George is describing.
Thank you for that explanation, the fact that we've already committed water with regards to the deep well annexation by agreement, and that if there is an annexation coming forward, that they would be bringing the water for it. So, thank you for that.
Wasn't most of those boundaries set up there because of the annexation fever that took place a few years ago? Isn't that why they really set those things up?
The annexation boundaries were agreed upon at the time the city was developing the 2003 general plan. 2001 to 2003, there were a lot of annexations proposed, contemplated, considered, land use maps were amended, and an agreement with Prescott Valley was reached at that time to delimit where each of the municipalities would potentially annex to.
I think it would be a very good idea to put on the general plan regional jurisdiction map at the very end of the book.
Yes.
Those annexation boundaries, so that we have a vision in the future as we're making decisions about annexations and general plan amendments, what our theoretical, well, our agreed-upon limits are with our other jurisdictions.
I think if there were no particular objections, we will modify the map to show that agreed-upon annexation boundary, and you'll see it again as you go through the final review of this at your last workshop meeting. So the first element for this morning's review is the land use element. The land use element addresses prospective future land uses. It gives a little bit of history about the city. It talks a little bit about the pressures on development that occur either through annexations or other types of development that may occur in the vicinity. Again, as I mentioned earlier, because of the time we have available and the context of the plan, we would like to approach this with the goals and strategies being the primary point of discussion, and if you have specific issues or comments that you'd like to make about the text, we can certainly jump back to those and talk about those text-related What I'm going to do, if it works for council, is to step through those sections where changes were proposed and made by our planning commission. If you have any questions about any of the other goals, please ask. We'll stop and talk about them at that point.
Before you go there, I have one text question to ask Mr. Palladini. On page 31, just before section 5.2.6, it's not up there, but it's under 5.2.5. There's a sentence that says, "Uses such as vacation rentals and recovery homes operate in a manner significantly different than traditional single-family homes." Should we be using that term, "recovery homes"?
I believe it's this language.
Yes.
So the concern that the planning commission had was that there are certain challenges that are known challenges to residential, typical residential uses. Those two in particular were known challenges, and the planning commission felt it important to identify them specifically. There are other challenges that occur. They may be periodic challenges or things that occur over short periods of time, but in these two particular cases, both were in the forefront of most of the planning commissioner's minds during that review process.
But in light of the HUD investigation and complaint against the city, is this an appropriate term?
Well, you may be able to use a different word. I understand there are different words to define it. You may, the, I think that even HUD, based on some conversations we had with them the other day, and based on the discussion we've had with council about revising the current zoning ordinance to adjust it to be more consistent with HUD's version or HUD's view of what the Fair Housing Act allows and requires, we've talked about, and this gets a little bit more detail probably than you're asking, but I think it's important, we talked about distinguishing between two types of group homes for the disabled. The, for lack of a better term, more traditional, long-term indefinite living arrangement that we, I guess, historically have associated with group homes, which act more like a family, a single family, and those are generally allowed in single-family residential, with some restrictions depending on the number of persons living in the home. And then the recovery homes or sober living homes, however you want to define those, are being sort of carved out in this draft ordinance to, and are to be defined as transitional group homes or transitional community residences in our parlance. And those are ones where there is a shorter term, usually a defined term, of living or length of time of residence, which are not comparable or not as comparable to a sort of traditional single-family residential use. Single-family residential use obviously is a, generally a long-term or indefinite use, either defined by, you know, ownership or long-term leasing, that kind of thing, versus short-term or short-term six, nine months, which is sort of the nature of, I think, what we're talking about when we talk about recovery homes. In this paragraph, are more consistent with multifamily-type housing, which has a, tends to have a shorter term of residence. So I think this is okay, so long, I mean, we use, you know, generally we use capitalized terms like vacation rental or recovery home. We define it somewhere. Vacation rental means, that's common sense, but a recovery home means, so my suggestion is if we're going to use the term recovery home as a capitalized term, we ought to then define it very specifically, and we can work on that so that, you know, if and when, and the plan, just so the council knows, is we're bringing the revision of the Land Development Code to Planning Commission next week, the 12th, and then to council on the 24th. So this will sort of work with that proposed change, because I think this is okay to say as long as we sort of do a good job of defining what recovery home, and then, you know, vacation rental is a pretty simple definition, but recovery home needs to be sort of defined, because HUD is sort of recognizing that as a trend, that recovery home, recovery-type group homes, although they are group homes for the disabled under federal law, have a different nature to them than do, again, for lack of a better term, a traditional group home for the disabled. And HUD's sort of coming around to recognizing that it's a very new concept for them, and as we know, the federal government is sort of reluctant to accept new concepts very quickly. But it's moving, we're moving in that direction, so I think this is okay as long as we have a good definition of recovery home in the general plan.
As an alternative, we could substitute the term we use, a transitional community residence or something similar to that into here in place of that terminology.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, we might say transitional living homes, more generic.
One of the things the planning commission discussed before recommending this language insertion was that it's understandable to the average public. Some of the terminology we use, the community residence, for instance, may not be something that's readily understandable to the average person reading.
Well, I would tend to agree with the latter, that transitional community residence is really sort of legislative or ordinance-type language. General plan language ought to be less legalistic. So, you know, it's something to sort of, I think staff can work on the wording, whether it's defining that somewhere in the general plan, have a sort of a definitions annex of various terms that are capitalized, or come up with a different term that's more generally understandable and less sort of legal or, you know, ordinance-type language.
Thanks.
I had that same problem. I have it earmarked here on the same issue. And I appreciate you bringing up our conversation with HUD. Fact of the matter is, these folks are coming to Prescott for medical treatment, according to HUD, because they are now, according to American Disabilities, et cetera, these folks are disabled. They're not here for, per se, recovery, they're here for medical treatment, and you might want to use different language than recovery in the general plan. That kind of is a red flag, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a problem with this section, too, and I think it should identify not only the fact that we have challenges that are associated with transitional, but also college kids. You know, we have several universities here in town and junior college, and it's always a challenge in neighborhood to have the influx of kids when they move in and they overtake a neighborhood based upon renting out rooms. So I believe that somewhere in there it should say traditional and college housing, you know. It doesn't need to be precluded, and I think the general plan should acknowledge that we have an influx of students, because we have a lot of educational institutions in town. So if you wanted to add transitional and college housing instead of recovery, I think would probably be more appropriate.
Okay, gang, how about this? Instead of adding stuff, why don't we just get rid of "uses such as vacation rentals and recovery homes operate in a significantly different," let's get rid of the sentence, and then, because the one right in front of it says it, "All business uses infiltrating into established residential areas can have adverse effects on the peace and quiet of neighborhoods." That just summed it all up right there. We don't need to define it further.
I would agree with that.
Is there a consensus for that? We'll go ahead and mark it.
I think that the concern I would have is vacation rentals are not protected by Fair Housing Act, and they are deemed somewhat of a business use. I mean, they pay TPT, at least they're supposed to. My concern would be that if it's too broad, if you end the sentence at "business uses infiltrating," so also sort of it has a negative connotation, it's like spies infiltrating. But, you know, a group home for the disabled is not, you know, should not be considered a business use in and of itself. I mean, yes, there is a business element to it, but group homes for the disabled need to be looked at as well as, in addition to, as a business use, as a family or a single-family residential use, you know, under Fair Housing Act. So if you, but if you went with the next sentence that said "uses that operate in a manner," and rather than giving specifics of vacation rentals, recovery, you could go with the next sentence, "uses that operate in a manner significantly different than traditional single-family, may require regulation." So in other words, you're sort of giving a broad statement without pinpointing two or three particular uses, because who knows what the future brings, and this is, you know, presumably a five-to-10-year plan. You may have some other new sort of use that presents a challenge to sort of the notion of a single family, traditional single family. So I would, I would just strike out these "such as" and just go with "uses that operate," and I think you're okay, because then you're explaining, you know, that it's not just business use, you know, home occupation, for instance. There are those uses that are blended, that are both a business, but also have to be seen as, you know, single-family residential or quasi-single-family residential. I think you're safe with that language.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we wipe out the words "such as" vacation rentals and recovery homes and change the sentence to read "uses that operate in a manner significantly different than traditional single-family homes and may require regulation and enforcement to a higher degree than typical residential uses."
I agree. I like it. Good.
I'd get rid of the word "and" for "may."
One other comment on this page. We had some discussion last meeting about the planning commission's removal of the concept of form-based codes. What was replaced in here was an acknowledgement of the flexibility of the land development code, and this section, 5.2.4, was the language inserted by the planning commission to emphasize the flexibility of our existing codes, possibly with some amendment, but built-in flexibility that handles many of the things that they were concerned about happening in future developments.
I would like to see the language restored that would suggest that we consider form-based codes, the one that you just put up there, George.
The language that was originally put in by the committee and was removed by the planning commission addressed form-based codes in a couple of paragraphs, but it also mentioned it several other places throughout, either as goals or strategies or mentions in following-on sections or elements of the plan.
Is there anything in the language that the committee recommended that would require the city to do that? Or is it just a, an option?
It was offered as an option to allow a developer who wished to approach development using that concept to do so. It was not mandatory. It was not necessarily a parallel code. It would be something that we would have to address through the way the city handles our typical zoning now by creating some exemption from standard zoning to allow for the use of that. Relatively minor amendment to the land development code would allow it. It was discussed by the committee thoroughly as an option, never as a requirement.
Well, there's advantages to form-based code. There's advantages to development. There's advantages to private enterprise, the free market. Nobody's requiring anybody to build this way. They're saying that's an option in the toolbox. And if that option in the toolbox is part of the reason why we got away from zero setbacks, for example, in the downtown for business communities, and the opportunity for people to have housing options, et cetera, that could be created through the free market system differently than huge lot, huge-cost developments, I think those things should be in the toolbox. And I'd like to see that restored also. I think that form-based is an option that should be made available to somebody who owns property that wants to develop it that way. And I think that's something that we're going to address at a rewrite on the co-development thing, too, so.
Anyone else?
Should council direct us to leave this in the general plan? It would be an appropriate topic for a follow-on strategic implementation plan when that discussion occurs in the future. Having that option adopted as a new code, as a flexible alternative to traditional zoning code, would take formal action in adopting a new ordinance.
I don't see a problem with putting that in there. Flexibility is good. We've taken away, through codes and writing books of codes, we've taken away any flexibility for anybody other than to do what somebody else thinks is right. So what I think is right should be flexible enough to have somebody else look at it from my side, not just from the government's side.
Mayor, I think before considering putting this back in, I'd like for staff to provide some additional background and make a determination at the next meeting.
We can certainly do that. So back to the discussion of strategies. Again, one of the things that the planning commission did was look at the existing strategies, and for most part, their attempts to add additional strategies or add additional goals to the plan was focused on making it clearer as to certain directions. In this particular case, the section is neighborhood goals and strategies, and one of the issues that planning commission wanted to address was the keeping track of social, business, cultural changes that could impact residential neighborhoods. And this actually leads directly back to the discussion we just had on the previous page for those edits, removing form-based codes and then adding in the discussion of business or non-traditional residential uses encroaching into residential areas.
I have a question on strategy 2.2, but I don't think we're there yet.
We are now, sir.
Explain the rationale for the city to provide regulatory incentives to produce or reduce, you know, production costs and promote all of that stuff. I mean, explain the rationale to that, please. What do you mean by regulatory incentives to reduce? What does that mean?
Typically, those are reductions and specific requirements that may apply to other types of housing that would facilitate or cost less for a developer to produce workforce-level housing. So it would reduce, for instance, it would increase potential for density within a particular subdivision. You build 15 houses, it costs less per house than if you build five houses. Those types of things are an incentive to build lower-cost houses without a requirement to build them. Many municipalities across the country actually have an inclusionary zoning that requires a certain percentage of any new subdivision have houses that fall within their workforce level or their affordable level, depending upon their definitions. That's not something that was proposed or contemplated here. The idea is to reduce some of the things that we typically would apply or give bonuses, again, such as the density bonus, that's the very first bullet point, to increase the potential for someone who wants to build workforce housing to be able to build a project that pencils out for them, that actually would be something they would be willing to invest money in.
Where do you get to 50-foot lots like we used to have in the city?
We actually still allow 50-foot lots in the city under certain zoning categories.
Under certain zoning?
Some of this, yes, it's not across the board, certainly.
See, that's part of my question. What does this mean? And, you know, it's just like the form-based codes, et cetera. You know, do we actively acknowledge the fact that we allow 50-foot lots and to build on? I mean, that cuts down the costs for people. I mean, have we pursued the opportunity to, and I don't think we should be giving them, and I don't think we should be taking people's property away from them if they choose to have, you know, 900-square-foot lots or whatever the case would be. However, they ought to know that there's the opportunity on the other side of the coin, too, if indeed we want housing that's affordable in this community for the service personnel that this community demands. I mean...
One of the things that this particular strategy can be used for is to support a rezoning to higher-density zoning in a particular area if the developer of that area desires to build on smaller lots, more affordable housing. So it's not necessarily handing a bonus or density. It can be used as support for modifications to our traditional zoning that may require larger lots in particular areas.
I think anytime we have the opportunity to publicly... I think anytime we have the opportunity to publicly discuss, we've set water aside. We have zoning available. We have setback issues available. There's things that we can do to entice somebody to do it, okay? If the marketplace doesn't want it, that's a different issue. I don't think we can hold a gun to somebody's head. But I think we need to publicly acknowledge that we do have the capability for free market to function in this capacity.
Thank you. Again, this strategy supports that very concept.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. George, what you just talked about, the intent behind this, is very important because as I read this section, I have some heartburn with what I'm reading, similar to some of the questions that Jim had. When we have a new development in a new area of town, increasing density, footprint, contribution of utilities may all work very well. But when you come into established neighborhoods, which, following Strategy 1.3, encourage infill development, if you have small-scale projects, providing these opportunities could very specifically change the nature of that entire neighborhood. So if you have some multifamily, but you give this encouragement of increased density above and beyond the existing zoning, the setback reduction, all of those things, you have the potential of changing what that street looks like completely. And so where my heartburn lays is that I think this is very broad. It doesn't get specifically into, and I know we don't like the word "specific" in a general plan, but I think it's too broad to say that this works anywhere that we want to look for affordable housing or anywhere in the community. I think there's a difference between small-scale, mid-scale, and large-scale projects, depending on their location. You know, this council and councils in the past have been just annihilated in public about off-site improvements that are provided by the city for any project, but yet the general plan says that we should do that. That's a topic I'd like to focus some time and attention on. In Strategy 2.3, streamline the review and approval process. Again, this specifically talks about affordable units. Our goal as a city is to streamline that process. And so for me, I see this as a redundant statement that we really don't need. More specifically, our goal has been, should continue to be, to streamline our review process for everybody. So I just, I walk into a situation where somebody coming from outside of Prescott that wants to do a project that reads our general plan could be led down a primrose that doesn't exist in certain areas of town. And I think that that's one of our goals. We talked about it last time, is that this plan should be something that people read that gives them an idea of what to expect when they come. So that's an area I'd like to see some, either further definition of or have that adjusted.
One of the things that we, well, a lot of the concepts that went into this particular strategy assume future actions. And perhaps better explanation of what those future actions would be, such as a rezoning to a higher intensity, a higher-intensity zoning district, would be an appropriate way to reinforce that language and make it clear that we're not giving anything away. But these are options that can be asked for and can be considered by city council through more formal actions. Actions that involve the public and actions that involve a great deal of public input. Rezonings are one of those things that we spend an awful lot of time noticing nearby property owners on in order to invite them and give them the opportunity to come and tell you whether or not they believe that such a rezoning will have an adverse impact on their existing situations.
Here again, George, I think you're hearing over and over and over the impetus for getting that strategic planning operation going sooner than later. This has been 12 years. 12 years. And this document's almost a parallel to the last one. We still don't have a strategic plan. So for the implementation of some of these goals and strategies, sooner we get that process going, the better off we're going to be.
Here we go. Thank you.
And I would just raise my previous objections to going into a strategic plan until we know what our general plan's going to be and what our staff contribution to that is going to be.
You're clear on 1.4?
I believe I understand the intent to make the language more specific and to give you an opportunity to look at it before we conclude the review.
Okay.
Within that, within the land use section, the goal number four, there were some changes, again, made related to form-based codes. So you will see a lot of those brought up. I can stop bringing them up if you would like. If it's council's intent or desire to see us put it back into the plan, most of the sections that show strikeouts of language associated with it would be removed.
And George, just specifically to my earlier point, Goal 4 and PADs address the concerns under Strategy 2.2. If we encourage the use of PADs already in code, we provide many of these opportunities through that process.
That's correct. There are incentives that are built in already to a PAD approach because it allows for flexibility, both on the part of the developer in proposing to you and to council in approving such a development. So...
And that's available to anybody, not just a specific group. It's anybody who wants to take advantage of the PAD opportunity.
That's correct. It can be applied to a new subdivision or to a specific project.
Thank you.
In line with that, we did have the Planning Commission add PAD as an option. It's an identification of PADs as one of the, one of the strategies that follows on the goal that Councilman Arnold was just mentioning. Some very minor changes were made throughout. Again, this is one of those deletions, so... Within the section talking about land uses in the downtown, one of the things that the Planning Commission felt was important was to point out that we actually have some plans in place that affect the downtown. One of those, the downtown action plan, is a specific area plan adopted by the city, I believe, in 1997 or 1998. It's one that may need to be updated at some point in the future. And we would certainly bring that back to you subject to action on this general plan. Within that same section, the Planning Commission suggested that this strategy be included to seek potential locations for additional parking opportunities in the downtown. One of the issues that we see in literature related to developments of downtowns is a lack of parking being a major inhibitor to business growth within the downtown and to residential uses within a downtown. Residential uses are a very important part of downtown development. Having full-time residents in a downtown keep that downtown more vibrant, more alive, more active than you would have if you exclude residential uses. Our current zoning code encourages residential uses in the downtown. But one of the disincentives for them is a lack of ability, in many cases, to provide parking for the folks who want to live there. It's one of those things that sometimes will stop a residential development from occurring because they can't accommodate the desire of their market of having more parking available. It's not a city code requirement for more parking.
George, under Goal Number Four there on page 38 for the downtown, we mentioned Strategy 4.2, improve and maintain pedestrian accessibility and amenities. I would also like to see, and additional Strategy 4.4, something to the effect that we create, improve, and maintain bicycle safety features in the downtown area. Not specifically identifying what they are, but just mentioning bicycle safety features.
Which means what?
Well, that's yet to be identified. It's...
If you don't have something in mind, why would we put it in there?
Because it's worth mentioning. If we're mentioning pedestrian accessibility, we also want to think about other modes of transportation, multi-use, open space areas within the downtown would encompass not just pedestrians and cars, but bicycles as well.
So along those lines, and to Steve's point, but Gene, something that we specifically discussed before is we understand that a majority of the downtown streets are not in a position to have a bike lane, per se, included. But some sort of a plan that would take bike lanes off of arterials and collectors and potentially put them in the neighborhood streets, providing that connectivity from the greenways to the schools, to the different services, I think it could be reasonable to include something along the lines so that as we look at a strategic plan at some point in the future, that is something we identify. You know, I don't think the purpose is to say, "We want it in there so that we can have a bike lane on every street." But we need to have connectivity at some point in time with that. And I can agree with that. I think having something that references multimodal transportation would be relevant to downtown. Because the greenways, you know, they border along and cut through, in some cases, the downtown district. And before you get, between Gurley and Sheldon, we have an existing bike way that currently is, you know, fairly basic, but ultimately may look to be improved at some date in the future.
And just add the word "bike" to Strategy 4.2 and not put a separate strategy in there? It seems that we're trying to keep the wording down in this. So by just adding bicycle after pedestrian or before pedestrian, accessibility, then it's in the plan, but it's not highlighted as a specific strategy.
That's fine.
Yeah, I do. With improve and maintain pedestrian accessibility and amenities, if you want to include bicycles, et cetera. I think in the circulation part of this, we discuss a little bit of that. But the fact of the matter is, we also have public transportation, whether we want to acknowledge it or not, that does come into the downtown area with buses and in different forms of things. That we need to look at some of that, too, because every now and then you'll get these huge buses with lots of people. And it's not always safe to start dropping those people off right in the middle of the street, any more than it's safe to, you know, park bicycles on the street, et cetera. I mean, some of this needs to be looked at. I mean, world's changed. It's not 1881 anymore.
Got enough, George?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So the last section of the land use element relates to business, commercial, industrial, land use, goals and strategies. Very few changes were made to that particular section. In fact, the only changes were grammatical, minor grammatical changes. That section is the end of land use. If you have any specific things that you addressed when you reviewed the section and would like to bring up, it would be appropriate to do so. We can discuss those and assist you with putting language up on the screen if you'd like. And I think as a result of your discussion about how to include public comment, one of the things you discussed last meeting was to allow public comment at the end of each of the discussions of the elements. So now would also be an opportunity for that.
You want to do that this time?
Yep.
Okay, on this portion? Any comments from the public?
Land use element?
On the land use portion, yeah. Rather than waiting till we go through the other two sections.
Want to do it after each section?
No, we'll do it now, on the land use.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'd like to remind everyone that state law requires accessibility to all modes of transportation, food, bike, automobile, for the same quality and quantity. And having bike lanes is not the answer. Educating the public as to the need for their attention to the person on foot, think about this morning's newspaper, and the person on a bicycle, as well as those with engines running them. State law requires that that accessibility, it's a part of our plan. It must be a part of our plan. It's not a part of our practice at moment. I think people get sidelined by discussing bike lanes. And everybody recognizes that the way streets are already configured and the way our town is designed is not going to make special needs like that possible in most conditions of the existing community. But the knowledge that we are required under state law to provide accessibility to all modes of movement, you might say the broadest term. But I would like very much to sustain your attitude adjustment toward form-based codes. Planning and zoning keeps telling us that this community is market-driven. But the people of the community don't accept that comment. People of the community believe that the future of a growing community is in the latest understanding of how land is used, even in existing old communities. And I encourage you strongly to put those form-based code sections back into the plan. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
You know, you're saying how by law we have to provide accessibility. Where do we restrict it now? What's an example of that?
An example of our not doing it? No, no, I'm just speaking of our attitude toward what we do in making a plan for building streets and improving what we have, remembering that a person stepping off a sidewalk into moving traffic in a crosswalk injured by an automobile has become a societal problem, which is almost impossible to imagine any solution for. But I think we must, in our attitudes, continually remind ourselves that that accessibility to that pedestrian is as important as the person in the automobile who hurt him, who injured him. Yes.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public?
Good morning. I think all of you have had the opportunity to review the comments that I have submitted earlier in this process. And I want to kind of go back to a couple of those things of goals and strategies. But I'd also like to mention something in the narrative portion, technical correction perhaps. On page 30, the, just before that little table there, the sentence says, "The 2010 census indicates that the median household income in Prescott was $41,497, with the largest concentration in the $35,000 to $50,000 range." In the earlier narrative, in the sections that you went over last week, there's a different number. And the different number is $44,278. So there's about a $3,000 difference in the, what is stated as the median household income from the 2010 census. So it's one or the other, and they both ought to be accurate. In terms of, kind of speaking to some of the things that you all just brought up, the narrative really differs in this plan from the 2003 plan in that it really stresses the changes in the market and that the housing in particular is driven by the market. And it talks about that there's been a correction in the market, that interest rates have come down and housing values have come down, and that that might, in fact, allow more people to get into housing, and in particular, people at median income and low-income, middle-class families, basically. I think that gives short shrift to the affordability gap, which we continue to have, and the changes in the housing prices and the easing of the financing is still not going to allow people who make $44,000 a year to get into most of the housing that's in the area. So we continue to have an affordability gap. And I would like to see the narrative and the strategies reflect that a little more smoothly. And like on page 29 in the narrative, it talks about the very... And like on page 29 in the narrative, it talks about the very last sentence, "However, with Prescott remaining a retirement destination, smaller houses on smaller lots should occupy a greater share of the market in the next decade." I don't think that's supported, that that conclusion is supported with the rest of the narrative. And in fact, the fact that we're a retirement destination is one of the factors that boosts our housing prices and makes it, makes housing more unaffordable, whether you're talking about purchase for purchase or for rental, makes housing more unaffordable to middle and low-income households. So, I just think the stress on market-based and concluding that the fact that the housing values are beginning to stabilize and that financing is more readily available is going to solve the problem of middle and low-income households not being able to buy or rent housing in the community. It's not going to do it. And then that's...
What's your suggestion?
Well, I think the one, the Strategy 2.2 makes a lot of sense, because one of the reasons that you don't have more affordable housing or workforce housing is because of the production costs, and if you do provide some of these incentives, density bonuses and so forth, that you might get more production of that housing. And then Strategy 2.5, which says, "Encourage partnerships with housing advocates, developers, and builders to address housing needs in the area." I would like to see that expanded specifically to provide support and participation in the establishment of a county-wide public housing authority. The 2003 general plan did not recommend the establishment of a housing authority, but things have changed. The reason it didn't recommend a housing authority at that time is because it wasn't needed. There was a statewide group that functioned as a housing authority for this area and would allow Prescott to draw in Section 8 vouchers and various types of HUD funding to stimulate the production of affordable housing. That doesn't work very well now, and so it's very difficult to bring in some of that federal money. And there's a whole bunch of advocates in the community that have been working over the last couple of years and have concluded that we need a county-wide public housing authority that will step in and fill that gap and provide an opportunity and a vehicle for drawing in federal housing dollars that would provide incentives and funding for housing that would be purchasable or rentable by folks at middle and low incomes. Strategy 2.5 isn't that strong, but there is a large coalition of folks who are really pushing the creation of a county-wide public housing authority. And I'm not suggesting that the city be the seat of that housing authority or that come under the auspices of the city, but I am suggesting that in the general plan, the city support and participate in the establishment of a county-wide housing authority that would allow us to provide the vehicle to bring in those federal dollars that could help address our affordability gap for housing within the community.
Lindsey, just a question. Is the county interested in this type of organization?
I don't know. I'm not part of the Housing and Homeless Coalition, the Coalition of Agencies that's being led by Prescott Area Shelter Services are taking the lead on gathering the information and making the suggestion. And I don't know how far they have gone in terms of convincing the Board of Supervisors to participate and support this, but there is a group that is wanting to push a public housing authority county-wide forward.
Yeah, I think where I'm coming from is that appropriate for the city to anticipate or believe that we should submit something to the county or be a part of recommendation for them to do something.
I think it's appropriate for the city to support the establishment of that, but not necessarily take the lead. And I offered some language for a possible strategy in my earlier comments, and let's see if I can find it quickly.
Let's get some feelings from the council on that.
Well, Lindsey, I just wanted to ask you, you know, you said that medium household income of $44,000 wouldn't allow you to get a house. I think they say, what, a third of your income can go towards housing, and that's, isn't that like a bank rule?
It's about, what you can, the rule of thumb in terms of affordable is that you shouldn't have to spend more than 28% of your income towards your housing costs, and that would be your mortgage or your rental payment plus your occupancy costs for like gas and electrical and so forth. But you shouldn't have to spend...
So, what would the price be then? That someone making that, making $44,000, what is the price of a home that they could afford then?
The old rule of thumb of three or four times your annual income is still a pretty good rule of thumb. So, if you're making $44,000 and you would be an affordable house, you would be something about $160,000 to $200,000, in that range. And we just don't have very many houses that are in that range that come on the market, and we certainly don't have new houses coming on the market that are in that range.
I just thought, in the short time I've been here, just the catch-22 that I see a lot of times is that we have the bigger lots where you can't afford them. We get the lots and we cut them up, now we're using too much water for the area. I mean, it's like this catch-22. You're not gonna, there just doesn't seem like there's an answer that way.
Well, there's certainly some opportunities to do, and there's some other strategies about the infill development, because there are smaller lots in the community that already have water and that, you know, already have all the other services as well, that you could potentially build a house on and build, you know, multiple units with more compact housing, too, that would be affordable, that might end up in that $160,000 to $200,000 range.
Okay, Charlie?
Going into this portion of land use, again, talking about affordable housing, and, you know, I failed to bring this up earlier, but the comments have triggered it. We have properties that have historic water allocations, and in here, we're encouraging people to come in and change the use through rezoning, through adjustments. At what point in time, though, does that trigger the loss of the historic water allocation and now the demand on the alternative water supply? That's an issue that we've been discussing, and that is an overall issue with our land use component here, is that we're recommending a way for people to go that actually hurts our water portfolio.
Mayor and Council, if I could comment. You know, the topic today is the general plan. A distinction has been made about a strategic plan to implement the general plan. I would suggest that goal number three on page 33, and I don't know why conceptual's in there, but prepare a housing plan. We talk over and over about housing in the city of Prescott. I would say that that is a very important or key element of a strategic plan, which would be the vehicle of addressing everything that I've heard in the last few minutes.
But to be clear, because I'm going to be asked to approve this document going forward, if a property has a historic water allocation and somebody changes the zoning on it, that historic water allocation will go away and require alternative water supply. Is that an accurate statement?
It is. That's the way it's always been, unless it's changed by the state law, because anytime there's a reduction or to an already set water allotment, that water goes away and alternative water is used.
And we're talking about an actual allocation or a groundwater designation?
So, in this situation, we're talking about infill. We're talking about existing properties, where it was brought up as existing lots that have an existing water allocation. If through this, what we're saying is a way for someone to go to get to affordability is to rezone that property, to make significant changes to it, are we losing the historic water allocation or putting it at risk and having to go to alternative water supply, which has a huge trickle-down effect?
Well, the answer is yes, in many cases. However, it's like anything, it's a finite resource, so there's a balance there. You know, you balance, if you don't have any alternative water to replace the, you know, what's grandfathered, then you're not going to be able to do it. And I think that, you know, through our presentations, we've certainly made the point that the availability of alternative water is diminishing, and so, on a case-by-case basis, that would have to be very carefully weighed.
And to my point, and then I'll be quiet for a little while because the lights are coming up. We are talking about, in the land use section, giving direction to make those modifications that have a huge impact to our water allocation. Anything we do that changes a historic water allocation has an impact to us. And so, I want to be cognizant of that when we're talking about infill lots and opportunity and different things of that nature. There is way more that goes into it than just putting a house or a triplex on a site.
Gene?
Well, I think Lindsey's suggestion, suggested language for encouraging participation in a county-wide housing authority has a lot of validity, and it's not mandating us to do that, and it's not setting us up to change the water allocation. But it would open up a big opportunity to bring in more federal money. It's very complex to do a low-income housing development, as you've heard from the developer of the Bradshaws. It just, there's so many little parts and pieces you have to put together. If we had a housing authority that knew how to do that and could bring in the outside money, it would happen so much more easily, and we could really address not just the median income, $44,000. There are a lot of people in this community who would love to make that much money. That's median. We're talking about people who make $9 an hour and now $10 at Walmart. And that's, you know, you're talking about a house that's a lot less than $160,000 for them to be able to afford. So, I think we should add that as a strategy. It reminds us that it's out there and it's something we need to pursue, but in our strategic plan, we can look more carefully at the effect on our water.
Well, I did find the language for the strategy that I had suggested earlier, "Support and participate in the creation of a county-wide public housing authority." That's pretty broad, doesn't mandate it, doesn't commit you to the extent of your role. Just says that you'll support and participate in the creation of a public housing authority for the county, countywide.
George, you can bring that back to the council.
If you would like us to include that specific language, we can certainly do that.
Well, obviously, there'll be some interest on the council.
I'd like to make an objection to that. I think it's too limiting, and I wasn't prepared to talk about this, but there is in the process now, the advent, actually, it's at the lawyer's office, the paperwork for incorporation of a community development corporation, which I'll be advising, and to limit it to public housing through a government agency is very limiting. So, I would rather see the wording of advent of public housing or housing and not limit it to a government agency. To me, that's extremely limiting. The CDC has the power to work with the communities and bring in workforce housing and affordable housing and businesses. So, to limit it to public is closing the door almost on the advent of what is much more successful than public housing.
Thanks, Charlie. Jim?
Thank you. Going back in memory, I thought at one time we had reserved for infill purposes, water in the water portfolio to the tune of 600 or 700 acre feet of water for lots that had not been built on, but however, we're here, and that didn't have anything to do with the assured water portfolio. That had to do with our water portfolio, if I'm not mistaken.
Maybe I could clarify this a little bit. And there are different situations. The first situation is you have a piece of property. That property is developed now at a particular density and has a certain water demand, and for discussion purposes, that water demand was grandfathered when the AMA was declared. And so, there is a quantity which we are allowed to supply, pump and supply. If that property is redeveloped at a higher density, which requires more water, we're not losing that grandfather quantity, we're simply having to augment that by the new demand. That's one category. Now, where you lose it is another category. In the 98 plats, where preliminary and final plats were made, in order for those, that water to basically be vested and recognized by ADWR as the city being entitled to it, the development of that property has to be, unquote, "substantial conformance to," unquote, that original plat. If the plat is not in substantial conformance, then you can't do the project, or in order to do some other project, there is no grandfathered water. That's, I think, perhaps what Councilman Arnold was touching on there. So, that would be gone. You have to build the 98 plats just like they're plated as ADWR confirms, because they're the ones who basically then credit the city in our water bank account. And so, there are different categories here about development and redevelopment, in substantial conformance and so forth. And so, it gets a little bit complicated, but certainly that's something that we can talk about more in the later element, which is about, you know, the water element of the plan, so that the decision, policy decisions that are made are consistent, I think, which was Councilman Arnold's point.
Craig, we keep talking about infill lots. Buildable infill lots. How many do we have?
A lot. We have that number. I can't tell you what the number is, but it's a lot. It's probably, what, several thousand, I would think.
Okay.
Now, those are lots of record that are undeveloped, that can be built upon, for which the state has recognized a groundwater allotment.
Okay. 5.2.6 Neighborhoods Goals and Strategies. Strategy 1.3, "Encourage infill development and redevelopment of densities compatible with the established neighborhood character and infrastructure." If the neighborhood is 9,000-square-foot lots, then we're saying that the infill development should be compatible with the existing neighborhood. So, what makes us think we can go in and divvy up lots, the smaller lots, in existing neighborhoods without affecting the character of the existing neighborhood?
Well, I think that the, I think the planners will say that the first checkpoint is zoning. You know, the zoning has to permit it. The neighborhood may have developed at half of the allowable zoning. And so, I think there's an argument there in a property right, that if the zoning allows density that is, you know, that is twice what's there, it may be a little bit different looking, but it's still a vested right of zoning.
Yeah, but you'll probably be talking about rezoning of individual lots in an existing, what might have been a neighborhood.
Well, yes and no, potentially. If the underlying zoning permits it, but the proper, everybody else develop to less dense, then, you know, you can develop your lot and have twice the number of units, you know, hypothetically. Where you get into questions of water availability is lot splits and so forth. And we see those where the zoning permits the splitting of a lot. The lot of record has grandfathered groundwater for one dwelling unit, and now people want to rezone or split the lot, not rezone, split the lot, and the zoning allows it, and now the water demand is twice, and we have to have that for alternative water. And that's the point, I think.
I'm not sure how to get to my comment when it comes to long-range planning and the vision of what the word affordable is in water, but I've always made a comment, and I have for many, many years, that the piece of property on the corner of, on Prescott Lakes Parkway, or, sorry, Pioneer Parkway and Williamson Valley Road, state land, which is ideal for affordable... Valley Road, state land, which is ideal for affordable housing. It sits on a node, it sits on a hub, it's something that a regional authority should be looking at, the state should be looking at selling it for those purposes. There's opportunities out there. But the opportunity is not in taking an existing lot and trying to make it something different than what it's ever going to be. That's never going to happen in the city of Prescott, because we're constrained, number one, by the water use, and number two, by the character of the neighborhood. What you need to do is look at raw land and make it something different that fits the vision of the community. And that's what we're not doing, and that should be part of that strategic component, to say, that type of housing should be on a hub, should be accessible for transportation, should be affordable to people. And the city or the authority, the greater authority of Yopac County, should be working with the state to achieve those goals. It's a bigger picture than what we're doing here in this plan.
I just saw, Steve, remember that the project that came through where Habitat took those lots? And they made affordable housing that, you know, obviously, low-income people could get into, but we took those lots and made them a lot more dense. So now, you know, to what he's saying, you got a lot where you're allotted for one family to be living there, and now we're going to put four families on there. That's where I see we run into the problem with the water.
Right. And you're changing, again, you could be changing the picture, whether you, you're a residential nine opposed to maybe a multifamily. If you're going to change the zoning of an area and it's, and it's okay with the neighbors that exist to do that, then you have those opportunities. But you can't go into a multi, or a residential nine area and change it to multifamily and affect somebody else's quality of life. That's not what the general plan's about.
Yes. Lindsey?
I was on the city council at the time of the great plat rush, right after declaration of water mining in this area. And I think if you do build out on some of those plats that were plated, that you will find that you won't have the problem that city manager was just alluding to, that if it exceeds the number of acre-feet that had already been required and grandfathered in, I don't think you'll have that many up zonings or higher density. Time after time, when developers came in and brought their preliminary plats to be approved by the council, there were big numbers, and all of them came in at the maximum allowable under the existing zoning. And they all came in and said, "We don't intend to ever develop it at this density. We will develop it at much lower densities, but we want to come in and get the allocation and grandfather in the allocation at the maximum number of units that would be available under the existing zoning." So I think you're going to have the opposite, that people will come in, when they do the infill development, that they will have adequate water, because it's already been grandfathered in, and that they will develop fewer units than were in the preliminary plats. There may be some exceptions to that, but I think the exceptions to that are going to be so fewer in number that it's not going to be a problem, where you're going to have to allocate from your alternative water portfolio additional water. I don't think that's going to happen, because everybody came in at the maximum number and said right up front, "We never intend to use the maximum number, but we want to lock in that grandfathering, so that we have that opportunity if the market changes, if the circumstances changes, if the patterns of development change in the future." So I don't think you're going to have that situation come up very often.
Yeah. So what you're saying is that the lots may get larger?
Right. In the, that it'll go the opposite direction. Instead of coming in with a request at final plat, or, you know, when they actually develop, that they're not going to want to exceed the numbers of units that they had in the preliminary plat, that in most cases, it'll be at that number or less than that number when they actually develop, which wouldn't affect the water allocation that has been grandfathered in.
Got it. One more.
Barbara Jacobson. I, sitting here listening, I would like to remind council members to consider the richness of diversity. And we still have a little bit of that here. We don't have a tremendous amount, but we still have a little bit of that. And I think creating something different in a neighborhood enhances it. And creating a diversity and a variety of incomes, lifestyles only enhances it. So speaking from those who make less than $35,000 or for those, and even those who make less than $20,000, people need to be able to live in the community, not way out, unless you're going to provide bus service to get them in, but to be able to live in this community, and the diversity in this community provides for the richness here. Thank you.
Mayor, just one comment, because we are talking in a general nature, and we're trying to discuss the roadmap for the next 10 years. You know, let's remember that we can set all of this up, we can do strategic plans, but everything is market-driven. At the end of the day, it's what somebody's willing to sell something for, develop it for, pay for it. So I just, my concern with the affordable housing element is that we are creating, in some situations, an unrealistic expectation that also has potential significant downfalls to the community as a whole by blatantly stating that it would be a good idea for people to go a specific way, but does not take into consideration what the impacts to our water and other areas would be. That's where I'm coming from in the affordable housing section. We need it. I don't disagree with that. There's opportunity for it, absolutely. But I think we're going to find ourselves in a situation where in 10 years, the council's sitting here, the people in the audience are going to be talking about the need for affordable housing, and we need to do more. Where's the money going to come from, and where's the market going to be?
I agree. When you look at square foot, when you look at the building cost, there's a competitive aspect to that. Smaller house costs less to build. But when you look at the land, it's a whole different ballgame, because the city doesn't own the land. The, the people out in the market own the land. And I think that's our biggest challenge, is what is affordable land values to become that portion of affordable housing? Jim, you have anything?
No, not really. I mean, I don't think we should be getting into the county's business any more than we want them into ours. So to include in our general plan without even having consulted the county makes no sense to me. So I would prefer to leave that out.
George, take off.
Thank you. So the next section of the plan is the element, combined element of growth management and cost of development. Not much in the way of changes made to that section by Planning Commission in their review. The committee's review of it was extensive. There was a great deal of discussion about removing some costs from development, such as amending or modifying our impact fees. And shortly after the committee's action on this, the city council took that action, modifying our impact fees and adjusting our plat and subdivision fees. So some of the concerns that the committee had were actually addressed by council before we got to the point of Planning Commission looking at it.
And George, can I just add on one thing to the impact fee discussion for the record? Because of state law changes, impact fees are project-driven now, with a clear path of what the city's going to do, how it's going to do it, when it's going to do it to dictate a fee. Years ago, it was much more loose than that, but I think now and into the future, impact fees are going to be revolving around the citywide needs and the impact that that user has. So the idea of having in here that we should lower impact fees is fantastic, but the reality is, if we have to build a water tank, or we have to put in a new water line somewhere, we don't control that number, per se. It's driven by the needs of the community. So anything specific to, we need to cut fees or do this, I think is a challenge that is unrealistic.
So in relation to that discussion, the plan does continue to include language that carried over from the 2003 plan that identified many different ways to fund projects. It also includes fees and types of fees that are a part of the cost of development in order to help the municipality provide central services. So we continue to list in lieu of fees, impact fees, buy-in fees, off-site improvement requirement, and various other types of fees that are to be anticipated by a developer when they come to us. It's generic language, it's not specific enough to limit council taking future actions to increase or decrease any of those fees as the need arises and council makes that determination.
George, on the previous page to what you just showed, page 48, the paragraph about impact fees, I think that needs to be updated. The third sentence says, "The state mandated a reduction," or, I'm sorry, the second sentence says, "Impact fees are currently used for library services, parks, fire, police, streets, water and sewer." By the time we get this plan in gear, that's going to be old news. And perhaps we should change that to say, "Impact fees are currently charged for fire, police, streets, water and sewer," deleting reference to library services and parks. And then just delete the sentence following, "The state mandated a reduction in the impact fees cities may charge."
Pardon me, councilwoman, I would, I agree with you. I had that noted or denoted to, or annotated to update as well. The only impact fees that are left, basically, are the utilities' impact fees. We don't have the public safety, we don't have parks, we don't have...
You're right.
So it just needs, it just needs to be updated.
Okay.
George, page 46, goal 4.1. Encourage, or, goal four, encourage infill development on parcels with adequate infrastructure. Strategy 4.1. Because we stated in 4.2 about new developments, where we're talking about infill, I still think it's important and the intent should be clear that water is something that needs to be considered when we're talking about where feasible and appropriate. So I'd like to see something about water included in that.
Certainly. Do we have a consensus to include that?
Absolutely.
The remainder of this particular element is cost of development, and again, it has a few goals and strategies associated with addressing cost of government, operations, our central services, the water and sewer system primarily. Those things are identified in section 6.4.1, and through three goals of that section. No significant changes were made by the Planning Commission in review of that, that particular section or that element. So that element actually had very few comments included by the Planning Commission overall. If you wish, we can go on into our circulation element? Sorry, sir.
Mayor and council, I do have a comment with respect. Page 51, goal four. The goal is to reduce dependency on sales tax over the long term. And I understand that this is a general plan, but as, as we know, when it comes to finances of the city, the general approach doesn't work, because we have a variety of different fund types, sources, constraints and so forth. So I really question a goal about reducing the dependency on sales tax over the long term, when in the state of Arizona, the way it shakes out is we only have two sources, sales tax and state shared revenue. We don't control state shared revenue. So I would suggest that we have no way of reducing dependency on sales tax, practically speaking. And 4.2, consider the use of bonding options. Bonding is not funding, bonding is financing. And so, I think that that goal, number four, really needs to be revised.
I'd agree with you. How are you going to bond for something if you can't demonstrate how you're going to pay for it?
Well, on that note, I wondered why on page 49, when we talk about financing options for capital improvement projects, we're not listing things like revenue bonds and GO bonds. Seems it would be appropriate as financing options to include mention of those.
On page, councilwoman, page 50, on strategy 2.2 of goal number one, it does mention, consider the use of bonding options for major capital improvements and so forth. But again, the distinction being that funding, funding enables you to implement capital improvements. The method by which you do that could be pay-as-you-go or financing by bonding.
On page 51, strategy 2.2, the WAC is referenced again as a regional entity to participate with.
Got it. Thank you.
And on that strategy, would it be appropriate to mention participation in G-Prep? I know it's got to focus on economic development, but it's still an aspect of regional planning.
That could be in goal number two. Improve regional cooperation, coordination of planning and business attraction for regional growth.
I like that.
Okay.
Well, actually, on goal four, when we're talking about consider the use of bonding for major capital improvements, most of that bonding would occur in enterprise funds, so you would reduce the sales tax dependence over the long term, because you'd make that up in the fees charged by the enterprise fund to pay for the bond. Is that right? Was that the intent of this goal and strategies?
All I'm saying is that how an enterprise fund operates, the financial wherewithal is totally different than the general fund, yet this all seems to indicate that it works the same way. There's no specificity here. There's no distinction, there's no difference, so the sales tax has nothing to do with an enterprise fund.
Gotcha.
Yeah. But the sales tax, in fact, guarantees the funding for the bond as well. So, you know, if the enterprise fund is failing to meet its obligations, it becomes the responsibility of the sales tax to supplement that.
Mr. Mayor, that's the, the end of the comments and goals and strategies relating to cost of development and growth management. If you'd like to take public comment.
Yeah, I could do that.
Thank you. 6.2.3, I know we cover wildlife corridors in 8.8361, but since we're talking about growth, I would like to add the word promote at the second paragraph to conserve and promote wildlife corridors. Currently, my committee, the Community Forest Trust, has worked with Congressman Gosar and now with ADOT and Simbo, and has placed, ADOT has placed wildlife cameras in strategic areas. And we are seeing the necessity for expansion in wildlife corridors in certain areas. And under federal guidelines, we may be eligible for monies from that slush fund to do that. The third highest kill zone in Arizona for wildlife, for wildlife is by Loews. The over-the-hill gang, we've counted at least 55 deer at one time in that area. We know there's more than that. And so far, the cameras show that they do not want to use existing thoroughfares and tunnels. And so, we're looking at promoting and the potential for either overheads or expansion of tunnels. So I think the word promote should be placed in that section.
One, just one question, if I could, specific to that. A majority of the areas that you're discussing that impact would be future annexation areas, correct?
Well, actually, I don't want to get in specifics where the cameras are, but the areas have been deregulated or are undesignated for commercial, because it's actually ludicrous to even think about them. And so, we're looking them, at them for other... And so we're looking them, at them for other designated uses.
Okay.
They are also the highest nitrogen and phosphorus and low dissolved oxygen areas, specifically slaughterhouse gulch. So my committee and other committees are also looking at what to do with those areas and how to bring in monies to promote the better usage of that.
I'm just wanting to ensure that if we reference it, that we're making sure that it's in the proper sections, because that is something, as we look towards the north of town--
Right.
That's an issue that's going to be coming up more and more.
Right.
While there's a limited impact now, it's something that we need to look at in a future growth plan.
And also, it's really relevant for the, the committee for the watershed, the aqua fair protection fee, which I still would like to see go back to watershed improvement fee, because in a long-range planning, which we have to do, that area is the highest impact area as it comes down into Watson Woods, which is the highest amount of E. coli, the highest phosphorus nitrogen, the low dissolved oxygen. All of that needs to be addressed in a larger picture. If we don't, then we've kind of cut our legs off in the long run.
Thanks, George. Dave, you had something earlier on, and did we? You're okay?
Okay. We've still got a quorum, go ahead and--
So the next element for discussion is actually our circulation element. This relates to traffic circulation. This element has a map as a key function of that or a key component of that. The map, a larger-sized map will be available if you'd like to take a look at it. We can provide it to you. Primarily, the intent, the identification of new roadways where necessary or expansion of existing roadways where necessary to carry traffic capacity. Some of that will be driven by development, some is driven by current needs. That element, in great detail, was reviewed and commented on during the committee's process by our, our traffic engineering folks, the city manager, and, and the engineering department as a whole. So it's had a lot of technical advice on it. There were very few changes made to it. Most are very minor grammatical-type changes that were made to it by the Planning Commission during their review prior to recommending it on to you. So if you have specific issues or criteria that you'd like to talk about, or particular goals or strategies you'd like to talk about, we can certainly do that. But again, there were so few changes to it that staff really doesn't have anything to present to you at the moment.
I have a suggestion for added text under 7.2, transportation modes and limits. I think we should mention that Prescott has also become a destination for mountain and roadway bicyclists, adding to the economic vitality of the community. Consideration of access to off-road trails via city streets is important to Prescott's economy.
We can certainly add that. Is there consensus to pursue that?
Sure.
George, I have a question, and it's purely a question at this moment. We keep talking about bikes as being non-motorized. Now then, there's little bolt-on motors and all sorts of things. I had one pass me yesterday afternoon on Willow Creek Road, and I think I was going to speed limit, and this bicycle went around me. When do we start determining what, what a definition is?
Mr. Palladini, do you--
Well, I, I'd have to look at statute. I, you know, there are, from what I've seen, there, there is sort of a, I guess, expanded enforcement of traffic laws regarding motorized bicycles, you know, on sidewalks versus on the street and those kinds of things. So I, I don't have a specific answer for you. I'm hearing from Mayor Proten that if it's under 50 cc's, it's not considered a motor vehicle?
I, I think you're not required to have a license under 50 cc's. So they make them at 49 intentionally.
Yeah, well, there's, there may be a difference between having a driver license. I, I think, and I don't know if that, how true this is, but there is sort of this generalization or assumption that those folks who drive those things, for some reason, don't have a driver's license or are unable to get a driver's license. I don't know if that's, in fact, if data actually bears that out, you know? But they are, they are considered, from my understanding, they are considered motor vehicles, and they have to obey all, just like any bicycle, a vehicle has to obey all the traffic laws, and it's also answered that they aren't allowed, you know, for instance, all the bicycles generally aren't supposed to be on the sidewalk. I think they get a pass oftentimes if you're riding a bike on a sidewalk, but I've seen firsthand where these motorized bicycles are on the sidewalk and they get stopped by the police department and cited for being on sidewalk. So, you know, they, they are obligated, obviously, as a, as a motor vehicle to, to, to follow traffic laws. They aren't necessarily, you don't have a license and a tag, you know, I guess if they're under 50 cc, but there may, you know, ultimately, there may be a need for some sort of broader, you know, legislation that deals with it, because if there's sort of this exception to licensing, tagging, you know, registration, those kinds of things, it almost appears that there's a loophole.
And Mayor, the, the problem isn't with the motors, it's with the brakes. You know, those brakes aren't set up to have those motors pushing them, bikes. Ask me how I know.
At that point, it may be an operator issue, too.
Yes, yes, sir. Dana, let the record reflect, Dan has arrived. Thanks, Dan, for being here. Okay, let's--
So there was one section where the Planning Commission did add some additional language, and I would like to point that out, 7.5.3, relating to public transit. There were a couple of relatively minor changes made to the text, but the Planning Commission added a sentence at the very end of that section to emphasize that Prescott's aging population would likely support and probably demand some form of transit available to them, again, as populations age in place. So that is something that's new, was discussed somewhat at the committee level, but more specifically discussed at and included by the Planning Commission.
George, I'd like to back up for one minute and go back to a very controversial word that I mentioned last time, which--
What page?
Page 56, 7.5.2, first sentence. We had something similar in section 4.5 on page 23. I wanted to insert the word limited before network, but in thinking about that further and talking with Steve Blair, I think the word growing network might be more appropriate in both of those places.
Beautiful.
Beautiful? Okay.
You know, what's funny is, and I appreciate that, because going back to the day when Ramona Maddox was a planner in our first purchase of the Peavine Trail about 15, 16 years ago, we've made great strides in our network of transportation.
And the word was beautiful. It was growing.
Growing.
Gene, would you also want that inserted in the topic we discussed last time where the word limited was challenging?
Yes, that, that was on page 23, under section 4.5. You got it.
I think growing's acceptable.
The remainder of the comments and changes for the circulation element made by Planning Commission were all extremely minor. No conceptual changes were proposed by them relating to the rest of that section. It's Council's pleasure as to whether or not to go through the goals and strategies. Again, most remained unchanged, or to move on to the open space element or to take public comment.
Okay, any public comments on transportation? Seeing none, keep rolling.
So the next section is the open space element, which is broken down into a series of open space and active recreational type of uses. That section, again, Planning Commission had very few changes. I would point out, some concepts, such as the circle trail, were, were added, a little better explanation of its intent. It's designated on the map now. And some additional language relating to, excuse me just a moment, let me pull that one out. Initiate my pages out of order. The section 8.6.1 is open space policy. Goal number two was modified by the committee somewhat, seeking collaborative ventures emphasized over previous language in the 2003 plan. The, the intent, the collaborative ventures would be public-private or related to a development. So we have seen, and one of the reasons why this language is included, is that some of the new developments that are occurring, especially those on the north side of town, sort of the wide open spaces where there are no other existing amenities, have emphasized trail connectivity and open space amenities as a feature of their subdivision. It's a marketing strategy for that private developer, but that marketing strategy has resulted in them working with the municipality, with us in particular, to create common linkages of goals and open spaces. And the, the committee wanted to emphasize that as a very positive approach and one that is purely voluntary on both the city and the developer's side.
George, on that section, 8.6.1, open space policy goals, under goal number one, I think the language there is pretty namely pamblly. I would change it to implement the council-adopted 2009 open space master plan. Let's just go for it, instead of pursuing recommendations by the former advisory committee on open space acquisition. So let's implement it, let's get it done. And on, somewhere in the strategies there, I would add, pursue an extension of a sales tax to support future acquisition of open space.
Implement would imply that we had money to get it.
Well, we've got all these other options, strategies listed for ways to do it, including donation, but I think sales tax ought, extension of the sales tax ought to be one of those options as well.
George, wouldn't that come under the strategic plan? You know, you have a general plan, and under the strategic plan is how you strategize or you kind of tell you guys what the council wants you to do and how we're going to fund it and how we're going to come up with money.
Typically, a strategic plan is an implementation plan.
There you go. So here again, we're hearing a strategic plan over and over and over as we go through this. So I'm just sharing my thought processes as I'm sitting here.
Does Council have a position on adding the language implement specifically?
If you're asking for input from the council going down the line, I'm a no. I think it belongs in the strategic plan.
What's the sentence again, Gene?
Goal one, implement the council-adopted 2009 open space master plan.
Rather than use the word pursue--
Yeah.
--the recommendations is how the language currently is.
I would ask a question. Do we see anything in the future where we do an update on the open space master plan, recognizing that it's six years old and there's been a lot of changes? It would seem to me that we'd anticipate there being a update to that master plan, which might want to be reflected in language.
One possibility would simply to change the 2009 to, say, the most current edition.
Okay.
We can certainly make that modification. I, I have not had a conversation recently with, with anyone in relation to starting a revision or review of the open space plan, but I suspect that that is something that periodically will happen.
Well, I think that we can recognize that we've purchased open space properties, and to have an overall plan on how to manage, fund, all those kind of things need to be now taking a picture in the overall plan. That wasn't part of the plan, but it needs to be a complete plan. At this point in time, I agree with you, it needs to specifically say something other than '09, because I envision all the open space that we've purchased has to have a goal to it, and that needs to be in an overall plan. I think our strategy, too, for acquisition has really changed because of the changes in the, the market out there as well. I think Joe has done an incredible job of getting the easements and the acquisitions, the right-of-ways, the license agreements to, and, and his whole crew, to get us access to the open space without just, I've never been a fan of just buying big chunks of land. You know, you know, 85% of Arizona is already owned by the government. You know, how much more do we need? We need, need access to those lands, I think, sometimes protection, but--
That, that was a particular discussion, and, and you'll, you'll note in strategy 1.4, under goal one, that there's an acknowledgement of various types of access, easements, license agreement, lease donations. We've had situations where, where people have granted easements to the city, open space easements to the city on a voluntary basis because they wanted to protect that open space.
That's right. But, you know, what we're talking about is goal number one, of changing it to something that was recommended in 2003 before the giant kaboom and the, the whole different ways. That's the only thing that's, that's scaring me. I mean, we could still have the strategy, I just don't know, I don't know what that 2003 plan is. I guess I'd have to see it. Well, I think that's why I'm bringing it up, and I think Mr. Lamerson put it the best, is that this is a general plan, but I think that when people read the general plan, they need to understand what we've achieved and referencing, I mean, every, I think every month, George and Chris are at the mapping department, mapping yet again more trail space and more uses on our open space.
Thank you, Mr. Blair, you're right. You know, we've got a general plan. We want to have trails, we want to have open space, we want to do, maintain them, we want to keep them safe for the public. It's in the strategic plan that you implement what you're going to do to address that.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, the strategic plan sooner than later, because I think these need to be addressed very quickly. Do we have what the 2003 is? I mean, can, can I just get a copy of that eventually, I'll read through it?
Yes, I'll provide you a copy today.
I think I'd have to read it before I would recommend on my end of putting it in there.
I, I will point out that the, the Parks and Recreation Department participated at a number of meetings with the General Plan Committee in drafting this language, so they have participated in it. They were comfortable with the language as you see it today.
So I'm not clear on where we stand on changing goal number one to implement the most current council-adopted open space master plan.
Yeah.
Is that, that was okay?
That's fair for now, and then kick it into-- What is the most recent, what is the most recent plan?
The 2009, yeah. But as Councilman Blair said, it could be updated. It is six years old now.
I'm inclined to leave it, the language as it is right now.
I'm inclined to leave the language as it is right now.
Still would like to see the research on it, and we could always come back again.
Why don't you bring the language back and we'll get a better consensus.
Very good. Were there any other sections of the open space?
Wait, you know what? Let me ask a question. This is a general plan, and if we think that between now and 10 years from now, it should really say adopted 2009 or current plan, because there could very well be an update before this plan's over with. And I, I want it to reflect the newest version of what it is. So I don't think there's anything wrong with putting in adopted 2009 or current open space master plan.
And I've already made a note to change that, just to incorporate the potential for future amendments.
Thank you.
You okay there?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. You got it?
We don't have any other particular issues to bring to your attention on this section. Again, if you want to make public comment, staff will also be happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the sections you may have comment on.
Dan, you're, oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth?
I'll be very brief.
I'll be very brief. I've been planning to make this point ever since we started this process, and the light just came on. Please be sure that all the maps are dated. They're a part of this plan, but they're not dated specifically. And they are used for other purposes, and they'll be changing right along as we make progress. Thank you for your attention to this section. I look forward to working on a strategic plan for open space. Thank you.
I suppose you already decided not to change the language from "pursue" to "implement." We had a very good reason for leaving it "pursue" instead of "implement," and there was a lot of discussion every time that came up. Being a general plan, if you say "implement this," we're telling the city council what to do, and that wasn't the purpose. This was guidance. So, it's like, we're suggesting as a goal that we pursue this thing. So, it was namely pamly on purpose. And there was a lot of discussion to that effect, and, you know, so. And then, when it comes to suggesting the pursuit of sales taxes, we tried not to be too specific on how to do it, for fear that somebody would later come by and say, we didn't, the general plan doesn't say you can fund it this way. It says to use this. So, we tried not to, you know, we might have made a suggestion or two throughout the plan, but it was on purpose that we didn't put in things like pursue a sales tax to pay for, or pursue extension of, you know, that's supposed to be, the council decides how to fund it, and we didn't want to put that in the plan. It's supposed to be general. And that's why we did it that way. It was on purpose. It was thoroughly discussed. And so, that's why it's that way.
Thanks, Dan. Good morning.
I know I've talked to several of you individually, but this is the first time I've been brave enough to speak up at a meeting.
You need your name. Your name, please.
Oh, you're going to be really surprised. I am the J.D. Greenberg that you once upon said at your radio station that I didn't know what the heck that guy was talking about. So, nice to meet you.
Might make me aware of what that is without attacking.
I wrote a talk of the town regarding open space, and you made a comment about my letter on your radio show, and it got back to me.
Okay, that's what it's all about, some opinions, isn't it?
Yes, it is. But I'm willing to change mine if you are.
I can feel the love.
Listen, I'm leaving the door open. There's always a chance. That's why we keep breathing, isn't it? Many of you know that open space is near and dear to my heart, and I would like to kind of reaffirm what Gene has brought forward about, please, 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 put something on the ballot regarding the extension of the sales tax for open space. I know that what you've said, Chris, about the fact that government may own too many, too much of the land around here, whatever, but there still are certain key locations that kind of symbolize Prescott. Badger Mountain, P. Mountain is one of them. I know things have gone round and round about the Dells. There are still some areas that we really need to make sure they're preserved in perpetuity, by buying by the city, by conservation easements. The other thing that I've been involved with a lot lately, and I was glad to see that in many areas, the whole idea of wildlife connectivity has been put into the master plan. It is critical that we enforce it, and that we also work with many of the developers who are embracing the idea of having open space wildlife corridors through their developments, because actually, it means that the houses that back up to those open space areas or corridors, they can charge more money for, and this has been proven throughout the country. The one thing that we really need to be careful of is that those corridors parallel the corridors that are being used now by the pronghorn. It was interesting what Gary said about the fact that some of the underpasses on 69 aren't being used by wildlife, and we're getting this huge fatality rate. I've been going to the Simpo meetings, Chris, I saw you there, and they're beginning to take a look at the fact that in addition to planning transportation for people, they need to be looking at transportation for wildlife. And we have to put these corridors where the wildlife go historically. So, I really would urge you to firm up the whole idea that when developers come forward and they are going to be putting wildlife corridors into their developments, that they contact the city, game and fish, find out where the wildlife are going, and then plan those corridors accordingly, and not just about, oh, well, we'll stick a little bit over here, and then, you know, they'll wind up using it. We've already lost our wonderful Prescott pronghorn herd. Let's not lose our Prescott Valley and Archino Valley herds. There are indicator species. They're a wonderful resource. And in addition to them, we're even losing some of our badgers up on Highway 89. And what's Prescott without the badgers? So, thank you very much.
You know, I was talking with Fish and Game, and the guy was telling me that the critters do not like the tunnels. They like the bridges. The problem is, is that those bridges, I saw some on my way to Las Vegas, going across that highway up there.
93, yeah.
They just cost so much money to build. I mean, they're just like building a traffic bridge. And once you get it, they actually had to train the animals. They put bait on one side, get them to cross, then put bait on the other side, too, so.
That's absolutely right, and the pronghorn will not use the underpasses. And as many of you already know, even with the barbed wires, there needs to be at least 16 to 18 inches from the ground. It needs to be a smooth wire, because pronghorn, despite the fact that people think they're great antelope, they crawl under the fences. They don't jump over them. So, there's a lot to take into account. The other thing is, is Gary mentioned also about fatalities. We have fatalities with humans impacting wildlife as well. Maybe we can be creative and get the insurance companies to come up with some of the money to build an overpass in areas to prevent people from dying, as well as wildlife. Any other questions?
George, just a comment, and it may be in here. She triggered a thought when she talked about Badger Mountain, and we can put Glasford Hill in that same category.
Correct.
We've had conversation with the state land department about a conservation-type easement. And I don't see conservation easements mentioned in here at all, but that might be something that.
I'm sure that the Central Arizona Land Trust would be more than willing to work with city staff on that issue. Thank you for bringing that up.
George?
I wanted to address Chris's statement. The average annual cost for wildlife destruction and the resultant of that is $8.1 billion. The implementation of wildlife corridors reduces that every year to the point where it actually pays for itself to have wildlife corridors. And the bridges have been the most successful. It does take a while to train them. But the results of that are that each year, there is less monies being spent through insurance and casualties and everything else. So, in essence, in the long run, and this is a government statement, it pays for itself. There is a program, MAP 21, that addresses that. There is a fund for that. And my research through private foundation, including all the things I talked before, there are huge monies for these projects that are not governmental and are much more easier to get. And it just takes planning and collaboration. I wanted to address one area that doesn't really need to be, but it should be acknowledged. When we started the general plan, I saw that there was a weak section for trails and open space and that. So, we formed a committee with Joe Baines and the Parks Department and George Sheets, and actually, we went up to at least 30 people, some coming from Cave Creek, because they wanted to know, how come Prescott is doing this so well? And we designed a plan for the next 10 years and 40 more miles of trails. That's increased. Last year, the numbers, I'm told, is we had 700,000 people use the trails here, not including the national park. It is one of our greatest assets, so I believe that the map is included. And it also was included, they were so excited, that Prescott Valley included in their general plan. So, I think we should be really proud of our open space and our trails and our recreation. It is our greatest gift here.
Thanks, George. Thanks for your help.
I think there's already a plan on the, to get to the top of Glasford Hill. I think that the trails are already heading up there, right?
There's one that.
Yeah, one of the strategies for open space is to lease additional state land to get to the top of Glasford Hill, which Prescott Valley is also doing at the same time. Yeah, so that is in the plans. And generally, the Parks and Rec realize that if you buy open space, it probably costs about $2 million per mile of trail to own the land and have the trail, whereas between $10,000 and $20,000 per mile of trail if you just get the easement. And so, it's a lot more cost-effective, and the new plan is around economic development and tourism, as opposed to just setting aside and preventing development in certain areas.
Yeah. George, you're going to need to plan a concession stand halfway up, because that's a long way.
With oxygen.
We have a cooler beer already stashed up there.
Sounds good to me. Okay. Anything else on this morning's activity? It's been good, George. Thanks. You're holding this at two hours. And we're adjourned until the next one.
Thank you.